To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undebted, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alrighty, good morning, everybody.
We're on this.
Hey, all the bikes are on, they're up and running. Eric. Okay, can I get a motion to approve the agenda? Move to approve amended agenda as presented to us. First and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries through the minutes from three thirteen.
Make a motion to approve the minutes as copied on March thirteenth, twenty seventeen.
I have a first.
Second.
Second by Bruce, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. General public concerns. No general public concern. Alrighty. Got a public hearing for the county budget amendment.
Make a motion to open the public hearing?
Second. First and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Alrighty, we are open.
Some copies for the press and people up there. You guys should have.
We haven't.
You should.
Yeah?
No? I thought you did. Maybe they're in with those copies.
Yeah, we might have one copy back when you get done.
I thought you missed the order. I thought I made some for the press and something you guys, I am sorry. I missed the order.
You, there was a clock, you were so...
Yeah, I was so in town at the clock.
We had this the other day.
This is the budget amendment.
This amendment, okay.
Okay, um, I can go make some quick ones if you guys would like to wait for just a second.
Sure.
Yep, don't take me long at all.
It looks like row two, we should get somebody to monitor those two, they're back there talking a lot.
Business.
Okay. Well, it looks like we got all Iowa schools out of them.
Iowa, whatever.
Well, Detroit, Iowa.
Yeah, you gotta lose interest or something.
Went from...
Did Duke win?
The night of.
I could do Duke and Duke off, didn't he win?
Duke got beat.
Duke got beat.
For all Iowa State law, too.
Sure, yeah. Yeah, just, just to follow up, you can't make a basket, you deserve to get beat.
Badgers are still playing.
Well, the way Purdue was shooting, man, that was lights out.
Okay, the budget amendment was published in the paper. There were a few categories, I didn't amend any of the revenues at this point, we'll do that as we get further, towards the end of the year or fiscal year. Uh, under fiscal health and social services line eighteen, I increased that by twenty-five thousand. Um, this is the money, the grant money we received from the state. We deposited into the county and then we turn around a regular check to the public health nurses. So, it's just an in and out type thing. So, that twenty-five thousand, if we amended our revenues, would also be up on top, so that's kind of a what. On line twenty-one, under county environment and education, we increased that by seventeen thousand eight hundred. And that was to reflect, um, we didn't have any salary budgeted in zoning, safety, environmental hazardous waste, and HIPAA. And then, uh, there was also the purchase of a county vehicle in there, so. Um, under roads and transportation, line twenty-two, um, we amended that by eight hundred twenty-nine thousand five hundred. And that's all, uh, secondary road, asphalt patching, ice control sand, new equipment, injury assessment. Anything you want to add to that, Paul?
I handed him the list that I sent you.
Okay. Um, on government services to residents, line twenty-three, we increased that by two thousand. Um, to reflect the extra cost for special elections, we had several, uh, special school elections this year. They were encountered on, we had a college, we had a couple of local school elections. And even though they reimburse us back, we still have to initially pay that money out and you have to have it in your budget. And, so that will reflect, the revenue for that will reflect up, uh, when we do our amendment for revenues. Under administration, we increased that by four thousand and that's to reflect the dues increase for NACO and ISAC. Um, on line twenty-seven, um, under capital projects, we increased that by nine hundred and seventy-four thousand two hundred. And this is the secondary road carrier over projects and the last of the LEC building remodel. So, that, we shouldn't show any more of that the rest of this year unless there's some new project that comes up. On line twenty-nine, we increased our transfers by twenty thousand, um, because of the additional transfer we made to the law enforcement remodel. And so, the total, uh, of all the expenses is, uh, one million eight hundred seventy-two thousand five hundred. So, it just reduces our ending fund balance, um, from four million three oh three, three oh eight, to two million four thirty-eight oh eight. A lot of that will be replaced when we amend our revenues here in a couple months. And there's no, so we have no additional tax asking, it just reduces our ending.
Ending bill. You have to have those numbers in there, publish them, even though you don't, for close to, you have to have them. Even though you get the money back, you have to budget for them, so that's the reason for that.
Yep. Otherwise, it shows a negative on the budget side and you can't have a negative on the budget side. That account only has one line item, that's public health nurses, so it's the only department and you can't go over department wise. So, those are the changes.
Any more questions from the board on the... Okay, any public input on the budget?
Make a motion to close the hearing?
Second.
First and second, all in favor? Public hearing closed. Any motion for the approval?
Make a motion to approve revisions two zero one seven dash seven.
I'm second. Second by Carl, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, we're a little bit early. Would this be a good time for John and Dean to discuss?
Sure.
Okay, that way you can get on your way.
Sure.
Do I come up here, gentlemen?
No, front and center. If you paves him, make sure you hit him, I don't want him... I don't want him grabbing me in the dog shit.
Alrighty, John?
Okay. So, this is about Mr. Bundy's property?
Uh, one sixty-nine.
Okay. I know both Dean and I have talked to the DNR over the last couple of years. Um, at one point, the DNR was working with, um, with Mr. Bundy. I put a call into them last week, I got her back. I don't know if you've heard from them recently. I know they check on it from time to time, but I don't know that anything is being done as far as enforcement.
John, what are, you said DNR?
Yeah.
What's a DNR, is that, is that something in their jurisdiction?
Yeah.
The, the DNR?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think I made a phone call to them last fall and they sent me a letter and said that they're keeping an eye on it.
Right.
Wonderful.
I always think the DOT would have something if they started approaching to the right of way.
Right, if it's encroaching near the right of way, there's a couple things that we can look at as far as what the county can and can't do. If they're in the secondary road right of way, or they're in the right of way, there's a, there's a code section that does not allow people to use it without authorization. We can address it that way. There's also the possibility, I haven't been out there to look, of, of dealing with it as a public health nuisance. Now, we get the sanitarian involved and, um, ordering them to clean it up. The other things are, again, contacting the DNR and seeing if there's anything else they're willing to do. If it's on the highway, contacting the DOT, seeing if there's anything they would be willing to do. Some times the DOT will literally just, um, send letters, go out there, talk to them, same with the DNR. I don't know what the DNR does as far as enforcement, do you know these? I assume something similar to what the county can do. I know in the past, this has been an issue. Didn't you guys clean it up? How long ago did you?
Yeah, it's been about twelve, fifteen years ago, the county, the state started it, but then they, from what I remember, they ran out of money or they didn't have money to do it, so they threw it on the county's shoulders to do it. And, uh, I know the county went out there and, and cleaned it all up and, uh, sorry to say, it's, it's a mess. I mean, it's starting to come out, you know, further and further, closer to the road all the time and stuff, so.
I would take a next contact when we go back to DOT again. Cause their, their domain really, even if it's in the right of way, it's DOT's right of way.
The problem with that is, the right of way is the right of way. But that only extends back so far, that doesn't really take care of the nuisance. I mean, the DOT isn't gonna have jurisdiction on private property and pass their right of way, so. And they'd be out, if something's in their dips, they say, good night.
Yeah, he goes out there and drags it back off the right of way.
Yeah, so you, you only got very limited, uh, very limited, uh, enforcement there.
Do you have a question?
I need some background, I'm not sure, I, so, uh, for this guy's property, what's wrong with it?
How far north the town is it, two miles?
Um, let's see, three, around the corner to the third mile, actually starts the board.
Sixty-fourth of a hundred and ninety.
On the west side of the highway, it's kinda, big pile of junk.
He's a scrapper, I mean, scrap, picks up scrap, iron and whatnot.
Yep. And it is.
I don't know how many phone calls I've received and we've talked with John a couple of different times and, you know, just to let people know, it isn't like we're not doing anything, but you gotta go through the hoops or jump through the hoops, but the... But I think that it's an eyesore.
Maybe the sanitary would be a way to go at it.
Well, if, I, I know the last time this came up, when, when Dean was talking about DNR sending a letter, we, it was brought to our attention, I think by the board and the sanitary, wanting something done. We called the DNR and they said they, they were familiar with the place and they went out and looked at it and then they started, uh, I guess what you would call enforcement or compliance actions against Mr. Bundy, uh, which is the letter Dean was referencing and I can't, neither the sheriff or I have gotten any update from the DNR. I tried to get one, again, tried to run before we came down, but I don't, I don't have it. There's, guess what? What we need to look at is, if it's in the right of way, is there something the DOT can do or something we can do? Um, that, you're right, you know, that, that addresses a very, very small part of the problem. I think what Paul just said is, back when it was dealt with, the time before, um, had a scrapping company or person come in and scrap it and did it that way, and I think that covered the costs and then, um, you know, if it, if we can declare it a public health nuisance, if, if that's what it is, and again, there's, there's things that are required before we can do that, then we can ask him to clean it up or clean it up ourselves and bill him. But I, I don't think that's as simple as just saying, we think this is...
It sounds simple, but it's not.
Right.
Exactly right.
John, is, there's some precedence back to twelve, give or take years ago. Did it get addressed as a public health nuisance by the county?
That I don't know, but certainly there's record of that.
Yeah, that's when Doug Wood was still our emergency management person and he took care of all that paperwork.
There's records of virtually everything.
Yep.
I mean, how do you get involved? That's out of your domain, I think.
How much you're...
We just did it.
Yeah.
Just as a starting point, because, yeah, the DOT, yeah, would pretty much determine the right of way, they can enforce that, but that's only the right of way. I don't know what, if anything, the DNR's doing, right now, not much. And it obviously falls back on the county, so my question is, how was it handled the last time? And unfortunately, it's this time, like Dean said, it reaccumulated itself. But maybe start there and just take a look, what was done the last time?
Yeah, I think...
I think Paul was right, I think it did go to court and court, pretty much, we had a court order to clean it up or something like that, so.
Oh, that got initiated though.
Started with DNR and then they didn't have the funds to do it, I think he was right.
So, is there this phantom fence rule? I mean, people keep asking, well, I thought a junkyard had, had to have a fence around it.
Well, I know they put up a wooden fence after it got all cleaned up, but I, I don't see a fence there anymore.
I don't either. But evidently, him and Dial must have, um, a rela-, because he doesn't encroach on Dial's farm.
No.
I mean, it's pretty much contained on the side, but just wants it to spill off towards the road, his words.
I think Dial takes care of it himself.
I'm pretty sure of that.
Yeah.
I think you have to just ask you to, John, to do whatever you think you can do for us. Our, our hands are tied just at your meeting and, you know, we get some legal, we can't even go in property and clean it up without an order.
Well, you know, I don't know Mr. Bundy at all. I don't know, never met him, never talked to him. So, I don't know how we have to deal with, I don't know if this is, I would hope it's as simple as we send a letter and say, hey, take care of this. My suggestion would be that we make contact with the DNR to find out what, if anything, they're still doing or planning to do. Talk to the sanitarian and see if he can help.
I think you should just draft a letter that the county's gonna pursue this, to clean it up and have Dean deliver it to him, so you...
Once he sees that or have it registered, so that he has it signed, so we have a record of it.
I think, I think we should have Dean go out and...
That's a good place to start, I mean, that, yeah, this is a concern.
Yeah, no, that won't be a problem.
Just to make sure he gets it.
I don't wanna jump to conclusions, but this has got precedent. When you talk about what it took the last time.
Well, I, you know, I wasn't on the board the last time it happened, but I heard stories about it. And it cost the county a bunch of money. And it happened just before I got out. It wasn't. The guy that did the scrapping, cleaned it up, he took all the money and the county got all the expenses.
Sure.
On the planning and zoning coordinates, if I remember right, there is something about a thousand feet to a major highway.
Be. That's probably where that fence was put up on, back then.
Well, there might be some legal technicalities, fence, distance, and such, that is a violation of...
I don't have the zoning ordinance number, I, I don't know what it says about junkyards or if this is considered a junkyard or, or what this is.
Well, unfortunately, this time of year, there's no leaf cover, so every, everything is, you can see and it's a mess, so.
John, is that something as the county attorney you can check into on the legality side of the distance back on the road?
Yeah, I can look at that back and I can look at...
Containment and the fence and all that type of stuff?
Yeah, I can look at that, sure, yeah. I, we'll see, you know, I think what would be useful is to figure out how many different ways we can attack. Sending him a letter and telling him, you know, let's get this cleaned up. If not, we'll pursue everything available to us, it would be nice to know everything that's available to us before we let him know.
Before we get into this.
Well, I think it would be nice to spell it out, because if it's something that, you know, he's been planning to work on, once it turns nice out, then, you know, maybe this will help it along. If it's not, if it's not something that...
Yeah, it's kinda like a unicorn rainbow type deal, but...
If it, if it's not something that he's interested in doing, maybe this will help him get interested in doing it.
I agree with Rick and I agree with the letter, that's the place to start. He's officially aware of it and I agree with John.
Unfortunately, the steel prices are extremely low right now, so nobody wants to hold the...
You know, I don't think the price of steel has a lot to do with this or something.
Probably not. But there's no, there's no financial incentive to hold stuff to this.
No, but I, I just somehow, that doesn't seem that, uh, cause you know, at some point in time, in, in not too distant history, the steel price was really good and it didn't seem like it got any smaller.
Right.
Good points.
Yeah.
I think it's started all the way. So, what, what I'll do is I'll look at, I'll look at what's available to us. I will draft the letter, I will send it to all of you, so you can review it and make sure that it's okay. And let me know if there's any changes, anything else, and then we'll send it out to them. We'll have a sheriff's officer, but, and, um, you know, the other thing would be, we, we send basically a demand letter, we, hey, we want you to do this, these are the consequences. Who, if he decides to work with us, who do you want him to talk to about his plans and how we can go forward with it?
Whose area would that be in?
It, here's, here's my, here's my...
I don't know him, that's fine, I don't have a problem with that.
Here's my suggestion, if he has a lawyer, then that, that makes it simple, because, you know, I can deal with the lawyer and then come in and talk to you guys or, or whatever. If he does not have a lawyer, then, you know, I think, I'd be happy to sit in on anything that you all wanna do. I don't know that it's been the best idea to have me communicate directly with him. I think, my guess is the goal is to try to get this done as nicely as possible without, I turn this into an adversarial situation. But, um, that's not possible, it's not possible, but let's, I think what we've done in the past with anything involving nuisance type activities and what the towns do too, is we try to resolve this nicely first. It may not be possible, but, you know, I, I just know from sitting in the magistrate courtroom that Humboldt, the city of Humboldt, has been working on cleaning up properties in town and, and so I see these, these gentlemen in court dealing with picking things up and cleaning up their properties and I know it's not a, it's not a short process, so, but they've been very cooperative and I think they've done a nice job cleaning up their stuff, but I don't know how this will go.
Judging by the number of phone calls, people are tired of it too, so.
Well, it's an advanced pie, it's not like it is.
That's what I mean, yeah.
It's not the end of a dead end road where there's two cars that drive by it every week, so.
Yeah.
So, is that okay with all of you?
Definitely.
Yeah, it's the place to start.
Okay.
Thank you. You have anything else for us?
I don't have anything else for you.
Good. Alright, thank you, you gentlemen, thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Okay.
Maybe Paul?
What's that?
Maybe Paul?
Yeah, Paul, do you wanna sneak in here and get, get it done in five minutes? Before we go dreaming?
This is our new agenda, where you suggested we put people at the bottom, Paul at the bottom.
Mm, looks good.
Without time slot.
That way we can go on in.
We're trying, yeah, we're trying to.
Well, we have a couple agenda items this morning. Um, one is approve a deter agreement with the Iowa DOT for use of P sixty-six and C thirty. Uh, that's to put a Box Culver in on, uh, Highway three, oh, approximately two and a half miles west of the county line or a mile and a half east of P sixty-six, so. It's not the first branch they had put that, it's where it loops and goes back up. Yep, it's the next one over there.
Over, Conley?
Yeah.
Yes, the north side would be Conley's. Um, we've been at this, this is in tomorrow's letting. And by the way, our asphalt paving and, uh, and our bridge is tomorrow in the letting, so. But this is in the letting, uh, tomorrow with that, uh, and it's anticipated to be this summer sometime anyway.
Is there a reason for not wanting it just painted?
We don't have it painted now.
Okay.
Once we paint them, then we have to meet with the reflectivity from here into perpetuate. And they don't really wanna keep them painted.
So, is there a timeframe on that, Paul? I mean, they just...
They do it at their...
At their leisure?
And then we, we get a payment. Usually supposed to be a pre and a post deter inspection, uh, sometimes a pre. Sometimes we don't seem as religiously as we used to, but eventually we get the equivalent gas, uh, uh, tax off of the mileage that went around that.
That's how they figure that, huh?
Yeah, and we've seen the checks in the past, for instance, uh, when the bridge was closed west of town, even the city of Brooklyn got a piece of that pie because it went through the corporate limits.
I'd make a motion, we approve the Iowa DOT use of P sixty-six to C thirty, is that the right one?
Yep. Number first. Second, need a discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Second order of business is a continuation of what you saw earlier this morning with your public hearing on the county budget amendment. This is the secondary road, uh, Iowa Department of Transportation amendment. Uh, and, and I believe you have a copy of all the little deep, uh, things that we added, uh, and where they went. Some of the big ones that we keep, well, the first one is asphalt patching on seven one one oh, snow and ice, thirty-five thousand. The equipment that we have carryover motor patrol, we added a wheeled excavator and brush head to that, uh, last summer. A big one that we continue, uh, we think we have around two hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars of assessments, drainage district assessments on the books yet to be levied with the projects that are, that are in work right now. Two hundred and sixty-two thousand, so if you don't think the county's involved in drainage, think again.
They have a big interest in it.
And then they, the last item, uh, would be the construction carryover, uh, with a couple of those projects, uh, having, uh, reimbursement, uh, fed aid reimbursement, uh, as indicated. We are fronting the projects, thus it is, shows up as an expense and then it shows up as a miscellaneous income on our annual report, uh, once we get fed aid and reimbursement. So, the numbers that you had from Peggy this morning, are these numbers in these slots as appropriate for the DOT?
Paul, explain this construction carryover numbers again, if I, if, just to, you know, not specifically, but how does that work now?
We bid them last year at this time and the construction occurred last summer. Anything that was not paid before June thirtieth is in this fiscal year. It was in last fiscal year's budget, so we have to move the money from last year to this year, carry it over and pull it forward.
Okay. So, that's money that you did get?
Well, it's money that's in there that's reserved for this project.
Okay.
And we had to take it from last year's budget and put it in this year's.
Okay.
I mean, uh, we have to have the money available when it's spent and when we bid it in February or March, we don't know if it might be a May or June project, it's...
Got passed.
We usually have the money when we bid. And, and most of the time, the work is in the summer and it depends on if we can get it done and complete before June thirtieth or after June thirtieth. So, it'd be easier for us if we had a fiscal year that was a calendar year.
Yeah.
Right.
Really would want it.
Because of the construction.
Construction season.
Yep, and if we could get stuff closed out and finished, because, uh, with the final audits and the, on the federal aid stuff. On the local side, we can tie them up a lot quicker. But generally, we have an amendment solely to, uh, just carry construction forward. You can budget for, for both years, as long as you think you know what the contractor's doing.
A lot easier to amend it, a lot, it's a lot easier and more accurate to amend it when needed, probably.
And we pushed that, the equipment for that, uh, motor patrol, cause we got a better price, right?
We bought two, we bought one on last year's budget, one was already budgeted on this current year. So, the last year, we had them both delivered in this year, we never paid for it till this year, even though we obligated it last year at this time, about March or Aprils when we were...
By June two, we got a little better price. The wheeled excavator was, we were having issues with the other one and...
Uh, we have one later, uh, the excavator is now, has about a fifteen thousand dollar valve pack, it's getting replaced too, by the way, just...
So, is that the, is that the reason why the head wasn't running?
No, no.
Oh.
No, this is, uh, the spin, this direction.
Oh, I see.
Swing, the swing function was half speed or less.
Good thing you know who sold that stuff to us.
Mr. Chairman, I didn't-
Under warranty, yes?
Oh, that's a different one. Excuse me, this is, this is the track one, not the rubber tire. We wouldn't be talking about expenses on the new one.
I hope no one's wondering.
We bought warranty for that. Excuse me, this is the, uh, the old, uh-
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve amendment number one is two thousand seventeen DOT secondary roads. Okay, I have it first.
I'll second it.
Second, my Bruce, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
This does require signatures from auditor and, and chairman of the board, so. And you can, you can set it down and hand it to Peggy and whatever, sooner or later she'll tell me that it's done and we're fine. Other than that, I'd like you to go to a letting.
Yeah, I'd better get to that.
Or a hearing, excuse me, letting isn't yet. No real good news, last week we had issues with our lift station and bodes, so Clark had to fix that. We had to dig it out and fitting from when we built it. The soil settled and it crushed, just cracked the fitting, so instead of pumping it to bode, it was pumping it out the top. That took a little bit of nagging, but.
Okay. Alright, I'll get these signed here in a minute. Alrighty, it is now past nine o'clock, we need to get-
Make a motion to go to drainage?
Drainage. Uh, first?
Second.
Second by Eric, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're now in drainage.
Where do you want Paul?
Yeah, sure.
Eric?
Sure, thank you. I knew you'd break down, so I'd great probably this group. Now.
We like some positive, uh, publicity.
Morning.
Good Rick.
Morning, good morning, morning.
I'm sure it's-
Fine, yeah.
Sorry for setting in.
My bowler?
Here comes the paper.
Yep. Anybody need a copy of that report?
I see you're going to the back, that's the best page of the whole thing, it shows you right where it's at. Exactly, exactly.
Alright.
Hi, Rick.
Okay, we have the preliminary engineering report hearing on DD number three.
This is the time and date you've, you've all set for, for this hearing that's been published, there's notice sent out. I'm just going to do a quick review of the report. This is a repair, uh, a couple of extra things I'll point out as we go through it that we found. This petition, the, the petition to establish this was filed in nineteen oh four, one of your earliest districts. Way, way over a hundred years at this point. It's actually established in June of nineteen oh five and with the ditch draining just under eighty-six hundred acres. It's in trouble getting bids. They, way back, they advertised four weeks consecutively, twice, um, to get bids for this job originally. They ended up finishing it, I always find it interesting, the total cost way back then, twenty-one thousand dollars. And, uh, we're looking at a hundred and sixty-six thousand now for a repair. They filed a petition for a cleanout in nineteen thirty, nothing happened. They filed again in nineteen thirty-five and, uh, that was followed through with. Later on, um, let's see, when was this, nineteen sixty-five, they were looking at some improvements. They talked about some tile is what they talked about with the improvements. Uh, that work was finished in nineteen sixty-eight and then, uh, the latest petition was filed late in two thousand fifteen.
So the last time it was cleaned, it survived?
Yes, yes. So it's been a while. There might have been some spot cleanouts, I'm not sure of any, but it might have been. Existing system, um, we just described where, what route it follows and what slope it has. Proposed repairs. We're looking at dipping this out. Uh, there's a point in section fifteen, which is towards the east end of it, that has just over two point seven feet of silt in it. So it's, it's not a real long stretch, but it's enough to really slow the flow down. And I think that's the same general area, you've, you rode that, I think, and saw some beaver dams.
Yeah, it's probably where the beaver dam was.
Yes, yep, so. Lot of silt there. Uh, there's a culvert straight south of Thor, a half mile. If you go south on the, on the black top to the first gravel road, the culvert there is high. It's approximately a foot high, uh, there's some discrepancy on how that happened. It's been in there a long time. I believe Paul has it in his program, uh, to replace that maybe, okay.
We don't hear this due.
Okay.
Yes, we do, we have, that's what we have this year.
Yeah, so that would help.
The west side's deeper than the east side in this area. So at some point they dipped out part of this in that peat ground going west of the highway. Never found the bottom, kept digging.
Yeah. Yeah. So some of that might be a little stagnant yet till it gets itself reestablished, but when we take this two point seven feet out downstream-
That should help.
That should help a lot, yes. With no hard bottom, um, Paul usually ends up at least a foot below the design grade with his flow line, so that would mean lowering this about two feet.
That should help a lot.
Yeah, yeah.
Assuming he's got an open.
Yeah. Well, we did, part of why this hearing was delayed compared to others was we ended up having to go downstream a little further. Way at the east end of what we're doing, that north-south stretch, way at the east end, we weren't going to do that to start with, but we were not getting a good outlet if we didn't go that far.
You had to deepen that a little bit, didn't you?
Yes, yep. And we were able to do that by going a little further south. We're still not below the old grade, um, design grade, but to get this cleanout with an outlet restored, that's what it took. Excavation wise, um, a little less than twenty-one thousand cubic yards. We've counted twenty outlet repairs. We usually find more when they're digging, the grasses covered things up. We include some exploratory excavation in our estimate for finding tile, digging for some outlets maybe that aren't showing, that kind of thing. Um, and we ask them to cede those ditch banks on the lower part if they have to dig any of that out. The goal with all these is to try and minimize the disturbance of the slopes. It just, we can usually do it by getting the bottom width the way it needs to be. So we're checking the contractors, making sure they don't get it extra wide. If they dig it extra wide, then the side slopes end up steep and that's where we get in trouble. Ditch should be so easy, uh, but seems like there's lots of problems on those. Based on eighty-six hundred and seventy-six acres, the average cost is a little over nineteen dollars an acre. Some will be more, some will be less, of course, so. You're, you've reached the point where, uh, you've accepted this report, set hearing date, now you're having the hearing. Here in eighteen minutes, we'll be opening up bids and see where the prices actually come out, but, um, that's a summary in a nutshell. I'd be glad to try and answer any questions from the board or landowners.
So this ditch is the one that's just south of Thor along the highway on the east side of-
Yes, correct.
So is there much digging along that because that thing's really deep along there, isn't it?
Um-
Is it just, we're just pulling the bottom?
Right, yeah, we're, we're trying to just pull the bottom everywhere we can.
Right.
Um, and that usually takes care of it.
Just from the, we'd be from the road or the field side.
Yes.
Can we reach it with that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
What's the design with the rip?
It's a pretty wide bottom.
I mean, that's wide.
It's wide and flat because there isn't a lot of fall in this ditch.
Yeah.
Well, that's why, I just didn't want us to pull it and then we ended up with a road.
Oh, no, no, we're going to pull from the field side and that's, you know, that's a critical area to be there, being sure they're not getting it extra wide. I don't remember the width on it.
Oh, okay, it's probably four or six feet at most.
Well, I figured.
Six, I'll bet.
Alright.
Yeah, even up at that point.
And it's probably twelve or fifteen of water now, so as you pull that down.
Yeah, it'll look considerably different just getting that two point seven feet out and getting, opening some of that up.
Rick, I see you left a note there that reclassification, not mandatory, but highly considered. Do you think everybody's bearing their fair share on this?
I think we've already approved a request.
I think you have on this one, I think, yeah, before I did the report, I think, yes, so. It, when we can get that done for about two to, two dollars and fifty cents an acre, it's, just seems like it's money well spent. Just more fair.
So you have not done a reclassification on that?
This is probably ready to meet with the commissioners, I'd have to check with jobs.
Well, in reference to that, your average cost means you have done a reclassification. Do you, as you've looked at this project, is there going to be anything that's going to be like hugely more on some acres?
We're seeing a range like when this is a little over nineteen, it could go as high as probably thirty. Just historically, we're trying to have-
I mean, I'm not, you know, obviously not, any of the technical stuff's been done, but, you know, you're not taking an average of nineteen dollars and all of a sudden some of it's two hundred dollars.
Oh, right, no, 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 no.
Is it, I mean, obviously that's an average.
Drastic cases double, maybe.
That's also probably like you say, run from thirty to ten.
Yeah, yeah.
That's, so, and you are, it is in the works of doing the reclassification?
Yep, we've already approved that a couple of months ago.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep. We can get the basics done when we reclass pretty quickly, then I meet with the commissioners to adjust them.
That means, just to clarify, to see if there's anything that needs to be annexed in?
Yes, we look at that at the same time.
And then we can get the levy out quicker.
Yes.
Correct, yeah.
So we don't-
The reclass will be approved prior to any levy, even if it's just, if it's done before then.
Okay.
No.
Well, that's, that's good to know.
Because this, this might take long enough that you won't be able to levy till next spring.
Right.
Yeah, long.
Rick, on the watershed with the river acres, you've got, where it comes into section fifteen and then it's straight south, you've got, uh, another dredge ditch comes in off the corner.
Branch.
Branch.
To branch, yeah.
Now one was cleaned in nineteen ninety sometime, ninety-three, ninety-four. Now, that is classified as part of the watershed, is that correct?
Correct, yes.
Since the, the, there's an assessment from there. Now, when it goes straight south, you stop right there at the south end of fifteen.
Yep.
And now that dredge ditch goes all the way to Boone River through Wright County. Now, but as far as you're concerned, the, the, the fall is perfect from there on out. And I'm not asking, I'm not saying what needs to be done, I'm saying, you're going to fix what you feel is necessary to get a plenty of fall at that point.
Yes, yes, we took it further south than we thought we'd have to in order to get that opened up. Now, we've, we've taken elevations downstream. We got it all on what we're cleaning out and we checked near the roads all the way down, to be sure we have fall.
Because once that dredge ditch hits Wright County, it becomes a creek.
Yeah. And we've checked it downstream even there, so.
Alright, second question I have is, there's a lot of peat ground in that area, an awful lot of peat ground. Do you guys have the ability, or can you enforce some sort of a cover crop or, uh, vegetation that will keep the peat ground and any of the soil going back in once it's done? Because if there's one soil that's going to live, it's peat ground. So once you clean it out, it's going to go right back in again.
We don't have any laws, uh, or ordinances enforcing that, wish we did. Minnesota has that in effect, but Iowa doesn't.
The reason I ask that is because there is, on that particular drainage system, you have a lot of surface drains, culverts, coming right off the top.
Yes, through the ditch banks. Yes.
Right. So, I mean, I've got two or three on one of the branches. And if, I mean, if you get a four or five inch, you know, twenty-five fifty, you're bringing, I got corn stalks and everything else in that way, even though I've got grass. You know there's soil with it.
Oh, I know, yeah. I've, through the years, when we looked back at some peat ground, we were putting tile through some peat ground at one time years ago, that soil had subsided three feet over since the early nineteen hundreds. And I couldn't believe it, if we hadn't done the fieldwork ourselves, I would not have believed it. And some of it's just decomposition, but some of it is washing away too, so. I guess it'd just be a matter of the board encouraging that. And I don't know what kind of results you're having with CRP, getting it approved next to the ditch, I assume it's been pretty successful.
The, uh, FSA and NRCS offers like filter strips and stuff like that.
Yeah.
I guess my point would be, as a farmer, I would hope that I encourage the fellow farmers to be considerate of the amount of dollars they're going to go in to clean it out. And two, you obviously don't want to have to have it cleaned out again in your future.
Right, absolutely. All good points. So, yeah, this is, I mean, absolutely would encourage that along, you know, all of these. I mean, and if you can get those approved, my understanding is it's a pretty decent return, uh, for money too, so.
It's better than farmers'-
Better than-
That's what I, I, I heard that, but I wasn't going to say it.
I don't want to be in competition with the government, but these are all in my cash, right?
Thank you. That is, yeah, very true. So, um, yeah, it's a repair, needs to go forward, it's a matter of trying to get anybody's questions answered. If they have some concerns, anything we need to check again or further, yeah, we'll certainly look at them, so.
Any more questions on, uh, DD number three, preliminary engineering report? Move we accept and approve engineering report for DD three? Do you have a motion?
I will second that one.
Second from Eric, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Hey, Rick.
Yes.
One more question there is, there are some culverts, and I mean large culverts, drive over culverts. They're at the right proper depth?
Yes, yeah.
There's one farm crossing and there's one end of the city, we can play.
And we show those on the profile and the plans too.
Is the other one the city, sir, right on the south edge of town, is that a private?
Thought it was private, it's private also.
We don't have the ability to do that.
Around the edge of town.
All we can do is encourage it.
Yeah.
Well, to me, you spend a hundred and sixty, six thousand dollars, you really don't want to fill the damn thing up?
No, no.
Especially in the peat areas, because like I said, it's really deep. Landowners like to see it improved and they tend to probably be careful sometimes. Okay, now, do you have a, have a little more time here before we move on to the bid letting?
Yep.
Is there anything else you want to talk about?
I don't, I don't really have anything in particular this week, so.
I know you, you've done a lot of research on going downstream of this, along that south part of the water. It narrows up, the waters move faster, so it works.
It helps keep it cleaner, yeah, yeah.
My trees over here asking him to be crossed.
Yeah.
Because either where we went in with a fourteen by fourteen, over east and west out, where it's built there, we have enough velocity, it keeps the-
Keep it clean, yeah.
That all reinforces that. That all reinforces that.
And when are we planning to do that box on the blacked up south end of there?
And I mean, even if it's a year or if it's not this year, it's probably next summer. Clean it to it, you have a basket on it, until you open it up.
It's like nine.
What?
Says nine point five on point number two on existing system.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's surprising.
So from here to over there, nine?
Because we're snaking all over the place, yeah, yep. This first one I'm giving you is just so you can see what my latest estimate was on the job. Then I'll give you another sheet there, you can write down the bids.
Give them the paper, please, that way it's more...
Yeah.
I'll object to it.
I'm not sure how many bids we're going to have. I tested it. Anybody out there want to keep track of bids?
Two, two.
Oh, we're good.
We'll have a bid tab later this morning, hopefully. Yeah, one one?
Sometime.
Okay. Yep, yep, we've got a detail for it, we show rock, we show how far it goes on, those kinds of things, so. Yep.
Rick, this is kind of a simplistic question, but, you know, outlet repair when it's listed, any of the estimates or tabulation or whatever, what do you consider outlet repair?
It can either be a tile or a surface drain, and it's the, the end of the pipe that comes into the ditch.
Right, the culvert, if it is a culvert.
Yeah, yeah, we typically use a one size or two size larger corrugated metal pipe, twenty feet long. That way we can have it back in the bank far enough, but just a little sticking out, and it stays there and doesn't get taken out by the ice or broken, so.
So as you've seen this project, are a lot of those pipes damaged at this point?
Yes, yes, there are. And we always find more because the grass hides them.
Obviously, I mean, it's common sense there, but so basically, if it kind of just damaged, maybe a twenty foot long, whatever size culvert it takes, get it reinstalled, and then obviously the twenty foot, get some anchoring ability to the back. And so it's just, you know, unless you find something that's really buried up and you have to go further back and...
And that happens, when they get the, the old pipe out and it is broken back further or something, yeah.
Because it got damaged and it, and water couldn't get away and it definitely lost things up. But typically, it's, it's a culvert repair, replace.
Yes.
And I, I do know, like, just downstream from that furthest east bridge that we're starting at, there's a big suck hole, four hundred yards downstream.
Oh, that close, okay.
How close to the ditch is it?
Uh, ten feet from the ditch.
Ten feet.
You can drive a pickup between her, but...
So that would, that would get into that?
That's more of a repair, that while they're there, they should fix.
Yeah, yeah.
You have to, but the outlet probably damaged tile too.
Maybe new ditch bank pipe is what it needs.
And then maybe some repair in the meantime, back where the hole is, of course, but...
Do you do a pre-construction meeting on this one?
Yes, we're, we're doing that with everything now, just eliminate some issues right up front, yeah. Trish must be guarding the drawer.
Has to wait till nine thirty.
Yeah.
See the new clock we got?
Yeah.
You have a weapon there?
Yeah, you need one?
Yeah, I got one, type, yeah. I got that for Trish.
All righty, is it nine thirty? Time for the bid letting on DD number three.
Okay, well, I, looks like we have about five of them. Like I say, I gave you the one sheet with the, my latest estimate for the cost, ninety-one thousand fifty something. I will start with Reutzel Excavating, R-E-U-T-Z-E-L, Reutzel Excavating of Burt. I think they've done one for you for a while, it's a very good contractor. Bid bond has been provided. Total bid from Reutzel, ninety-four thousand seven hundred ninety-eight dollars, nine four seven nine eight. Next one will be from Nagel Land Tiling Incorporated of Garwin. Bid bond has been provided. Their bid is eighty-one thousand one hundred forty-four dollars and twenty-four cents, excuse me, eight one one four four point two four. Next one will be from B and B, that's the letter B, the letter B Farm Drainage of Longford. Bid bond has been provided. Bid from B and B is seventy-one thousand one hundred fifty-two dollars and sixty cents, seven one one five two point six oh.
So the next ones will be in the sixties.
I was just, I was thinking along those lines myself. It's just, once in a while it happens to, you go right on through, but... This is from Peterson Excavating, P-E-D-E-R-S-O-N, Peterson Excavating. They provide a certified, their cashier's check. Just as a reminder, they have, the bid security is supposed to be either a bid bond or a certified check, ten, ten percent of the bid with a maximum of ten thousand dollars. Okay, you're not going to believe this, Rick. Peterson bid is sixty-nine thousand three hundred and seventy dollars, six nine three seven dollars.
We got a lot more lines here.
Yeah, yeah. Bid bond has been provided.
No idea.
Sorry. This is Jerkee, it's J-E-R-K-E, Jerkee and Sons.
He said J.
It's J.
Where they are.
Oh, I'm sorry. Um, Sioux Falls. Sorry, I couldn't tell myself. The bid from Jerkee and Sons, sixty-five thousand seven hundred fifty-three dollars and seventy-four cents.
That's unusual, they don't come in order.
Yeah, because I kind of changed.
Too bad we don't have about four more, we'll get it down to twenty thousand.
Yeah, I will, they, I get, I'll get some references. They had good questions, I can tell they've done the work before, they, they have done several projects before, just not over this far. I will get references, I will verify them, so I'm going to, I guess I'd put off award till next week, till I can check. Yeah, I'll get them checked out.
It's a new contractor that we haven't dealt with before.
Yeah, yep, so, yeah, I'll check the math today, but, yeah. Oh, yes, yes, absolutely.
What was that called?
Peterson's bid here before.
Peterson.
Yeah, he's got one of your jobs.
He's got a bid out there already, right?
Yeah, he's got one of the jobs, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, County K, this is, County K Peterson.
Yeah, I'm on trade, because we get screwed up all the time.
Yeah. He does have some references here.
Yeah, so when we look at a total estimated bid by engineer of a hundred and sixty-six thousand, we got bids coming in here, what part of the bid is that, that these guys have bid on?
Good question.
I can't believe these guys have bid a hundred and sixty-six thousand on our project.
No, you'll see, okay. Yours, yours is my total estimate for the construction. Then we throw in ten percent contingencies because we don't know, we hadn't done the design yet at this time. So we add ten percent, so that's a line item you can throw out. So just compare it to this line, yeah.
What line were you telling me to compare to?
First, where it says estimated, there you go, the top one down, whoop, there you go, following the items. Yep, that's my construction. And every engineer I know adds ten percent contingencies because you're not sure how the bids are going to come out, it isn't your final design yet when you do the report, so, but we can throw that out.
Any added pipe repair or...
There you go, yeah, because there'll be some added pipe guaranteed. I mean, I haven't had one yet where you didn't find some pipe that, that you didn't see when you're doing the field work, so.
I was going to say, are you going to put that out?
Contract, and you don't have to name a contractor, but just, yeah.
Just going to award a contract on DD number three. Okay, now, you've got a few minutes now before we go.
Do you have the time, or are you just do it later? We don't, we have to set the timer on awarding that, or are you just do it?
Uh, we probably should take a time.
Well, I, you don't have anything in our book here, that's why I want to make sure.
Well, I don't, but I don't know what.
Well, let's start filling our book up.
Yeah, we... I would say we did nine o'clock, or unless she has already some plan, but...
I, I think he doesn't have anything in here either, so that's why I figured we might want to do it before something... And we haven't went to the secondary roads that well yet, so we could end up with...
A full day.
Yeah.
What time do you want to be down?
Would work for you, Rick, next Monday.
Next week?
We don't have anything on our book.
Yeah, our page is empty right now, so if you get in there early, you get to pick your time.
Yeah, wide open.
That's Trish coming back with some bad news.
Yeah.
Nine?
Nine, you can take care of initial business, business and then this.
Got a word, Ben?
Yeah, we'll wait for her to come back so she can take notes.
We could do that and then, depending on what the number six is, we could...
Oh, yeah.
Yep.
Or should we do that the next day so you drive down again?
Yeah, keep, no, keep that in mind.
Yeah, yeah, that's right.
Here she comes.
Okay, do we have much going on?
Nope, I mean, it looks like it.
Looks pretty open, let's shoot for nine o'clock.
Nine each?
I got a motion to that back there.
I'll make a motion to set nine o'clock on the twenty-seventh for number three.
We got a first and a second, all in favor?
All right.
Motion carries. Okay, eighty-six.
Pick some more.
Have you guys signed in?
No, this is for the number six.
Yep.
If you don't sign in, she really gets mean.
You guys see it back there?
That's entirely, I know, but were you looking, were you looking at... Yeah, were you looking at this compared to that? Yeah, and I didn't, Rick explained that, but I didn't quite get it. I explained the one gentleman, look at the top, it's a suck hole of a hundred thirteen five, and then the mid tet...
That's a camber tanning down.
Well, but the ten percent stuff is underneath.
Engineers always figure...
Can you explain, we had a question from the media and me.
Okay.
And you just, I apologize, I didn't look close enough at the number when you were playing it. I understand the ten percent and the stuff down here, but how was it a hundred and thirteen originally estimate and then the bid calculation is ninety-one? Can, we're just, my question is between these numbers right here.
I do this estimate later, after final plans and specs are done?
Okay, I understand, don't add this, but, so our question is between this number and this number.
When I did my preliminary engineering report, this was my best shot at the cost.
Okay.
I reevaluated it during this bid tab form, and that's...
So basically, this number...
Compared to that, there you go.
As far as that's, there you go, so, yeah, I understand, don't take this...
Right, right.
So that's, you get that guess? So this is, this is a little more accurate.
Yes, well, hopefully, a lot more. Well, yeah.
According to bid sizes, so it's just more of an estimate, closer estimate.
Yes, there you go, yes, yeah.
This is right above the, the new pipe, and then right here, so we can get it...
I'm thinking of the big, I didn't look at that real... I'm thinking of the big, I didn't look at that real well, or even...
Well, that's why I wondered if, but that's just...
This one's getting a bit confusing, because we've got the main, half inch coefficient, one inch coefficient, and we've got the...
That'll be six.
Yeah. It looks like I might have to make more copies.
I know all those.
I'll get some more of these, and we're having this...
Busy in town.
Later today.
Looks like someone stopped to clean the, in between the dills, and then tractor into several big piles right down the road, and probably didn't let it down the field, if you can't come like here in the field, it's a bit...
Must've been paying.
It said right there, woman driving it.
Water there? Very trouble over here. Certainly.
So, number six, this still...
This is the one, this is north of the door.
No tile, no tile, Roger.
When did you guys get back?
Okay, we got tile forty-five.
Oh, Trish, you wanna grab those?
Grab the bids?
We have the bid letting for main tile, and branch B on eighty-six. This is gonna be a little confusing as we go here, and that's why this is different than typical, because we got, uh, option one is the main tile with a half inch, option two is branch B with a half inch, option three is the main tile with a one inch, and branch B is, uh, there is, four is branch B with a one inch, so, and we're...
You're gonna have to be like an auctioneer calling, you're gonna be awesome too.
Yeah, I'm hoping she got this the way I've got the, um, these stapled together for you, um, yeah, so, anyway. I can promise you these won't be in order.
Never know.
No, that's right. Okay. I think about six or seven bids, okay. And we do have these to be awarded separately, branch B and the main will be awarded separately, we thought we might get more interest that way, uh, yeah. Okay, first one is from Gerke Incorporated out of Eldora, G.E.H.R.K.E. The bond has been provided. Okay, let's start out, huh, option one, $674,544.61. Six-seven-four, five-four-four, point-six-one. Option two, $411,919.26. Four-one-one, nine-one-nine, point-two-six. Option three, total, $981,585.65. Ninety-one, five-eight-five, point-six-five. Option four, total, $608,721.83. Six-oh-eight, seven-twenty-one, point-eight-three. Next one will be from Nels, Nels Peterson, N-E-L-S, and then it's P.E.D.E.R.S.O.N., out of Badger.
This is Badger, right?
Yep. Many of you are probably familiar with them, being that close. Okay, option one, $595,511. Five-nine-five, five-one-one, even. Option two, $375,357, even. Three-seven-five, three-five-seven. Option three, total, $875,658. Eight-seven-five, six-five-eight. Option four, $548,571. Five-four-eight, five-seven-one. Okay, next one will be from Ritzel Excavating, R.E.U.T.Z.E.L.
What was that, R.U.E.T.?
Yeah, R.E.U.T.Z.E.L. Yeah.
Is that Wollingtree?
Nope, this one's Burt.
Burt.
B and D's.
But it's probably Burt.
Yeah, you should know that, all right. Big bond.
Burt Berry.
Is that what it was?
Years and years ago.
Yeah, where they consummated.
Okay, from Ritzel. Option one, $655,989. Six-five-five, nine-eight-nine. Option two, $412,267. Four-one-two, two-six-seven. Option three, $1,036,602. One, zero-three-six, six-oh-two. Option four, $642,592. Six-four-two, five-nine-two. Next one will be from Holland Contracting, I believe you're, they're doing your DD thirty-three job right now.
In Forest City, right?
Yep. The bond has been provided. Option one, total, $762,072.96. Seven-six-two, zero-seven-two, point-nine-six. Option two, $434,908.48. Four-three-four, nine-oh-eight, point-four-eight. Option three, total, $1,105,678.6. One, one-oh-five, six-seven-eight, point-zero-six. Option four, $636,722.7. Six-three-six, seven-two-two, point-zero-seven. This one is from Larson Contracting.
Larson?
Larson, out of Lake Nels.
S.O.N. or E.D.?
Uh, S.O.N. The bond has been provided. Okay, option one, total, $1,053,981.59. One, zero-five-three, nine-eight-one, point-five-nine. Option two, $702,887.7. Seven-oh-two, eight-eight-seven, zero-seven. Item, option three, total, $1,597,138.33. One, five-nine-seven, one-three-eight, point-three-three. Option four, total, $1,020,537.20. One, zero-two-zero, five-three-seven, point-two-oh. Next one is from Rognes Corporation. They're out of Ankeny. The bond has been provided. Total, option one, $751,508.75. Seven-five-one, five-oh-eight, point-seven-five. Option two, $469,122, even. Four-six-nine, one-two-two. Option three, $1,106,167. One, one-oh-six, one-six-seven. Option four, $696,606. Six-nine-six, six-oh-six. Next one is from King Construction, from Wall Lake, K.I.N.G. Okay, option one, total, $722,751.80. Seven-two-two, seven-five-one, point-eight-zero. Option two, $433,362.75. Four-three-three, three-six-two, point-seven-five. Option three, total, $1,098,601. One, zero-nine-eight, six-oh-one. Option four, total, $658,945. Six-five-eight, nine-four-five. Next one is from Denver Underground. I'm used to Denver, Iowa. Denver has done a couple jobs at least for you guys previously, okay. Option one, total, $766,577, even. Seven-six-six, five-seven-seven. Option two, $476,857. Four-seven-six, eight-five-seven. Option three, total, $1,120,70. One, one-two-zero, zero-seven-zero. Option four, total, $701,310. Seven-oh-one, three-one-oh.
Got lots of bidders.
Yeah, yeah. This one is from H&amp;H Construction, Sabula, Iowa, S.A.B.U.L.A. I'm not familiar where that is.
By Plantman.
Oh, okay.
Across the river from Savannah.
Okay, okay. The bond has been provided. Option one, $817,225.93. Eight-one-seven, two-two-five, point-nine-three. Option two, $580,985.32. Five-eight-oh, nine-eight-five, point-three-two. Option three, $1,249,663.58. One, two-four-nine, six-six-three, point-five-eight. Option four, $815,529.60. Eight-one-five, five-two-nine, point-six-oh. Hi.
It's got a notch.
Yeah, it is, yeah, there was a lot of interest, I had a lot of calls on it, I'll check a little bit, but, I'm thinking, time we analyze all these, check them all, maybe just plan to look at awarding next week on this one too.
Yeah, that'd be fine, so we do that like at nine, ten?
Yeah, yeah, it shouldn't take long for, yeah.
Like, for motion, can I start?
I'll make a motion, use the same date, the twenty-seventh, at nine-ten, are you gonna make contact with the person, or the...
The contractor?
The little bidder?
I mean, if it was one of these more, further away, that would need to know.
Absolutely, I will definitely check references with one of these that we're not as familiar with.
I think all of them, you have one in the committee, Ben?
Yes.
Thank you. For all your interest.
Rick, are you gonna make a decision on the options next week too, which, like, option one through four?
Yeah, I guess any landowners that are here, I don't know, not many landowners here, most of the contact is here, um, would hurt to have some input, I don't know.
Back to you.
Thank you.
It is, I wonder...
You didn't get a second number?
What's that?
We only got a...
Yeah, I got a, I got a good question, well, let's get a second on this, and we'll discuss it, second date, uh, discussion on this bid letting number six. We have different options, I wonder if we should have, invite the landowners in here
That's what I wondered.
And list of them, yeah.
Because if you're dealing with anywhere...
So, maybe we should back the time up just a little bit on this, and if it's in the paper and on the radio, make sure you get some landowners in here.
Yeah, when do we make the decision on, uh, basically, in this case, the half inch versus one inch?
It's, when you award, um, when you're ready to... Basically up to us to make the decision, from the input.
We have, you know, we have so much drainage district stuff going, and mixed together and all that stuff, have we had, and how much have we had, discussion between just the half inch versus one inch? Anything?
We talked about it at the hearing, uh...
Do we have any, we have any preference, give any feedback?
The farmers, in the past, have usually bumped it up to an inch, because when you're doing it, you gotta, you gotta look at a hundred years from now.
Well, I understand all that, you're preaching to the choir, I agree with that, but, you know, there's that rare case...
Yes, it's, it happened here too.
There's that rare case, and I've had, uh, you know, drainage district people get after me that it was one inch, they felt half inch would've been more than adequate, and they were, you know, so, I'm just curious how much of any discussion...
Then your $300,000 difference.
Yeah, but the difference between the high and the low bid is huge.
Huge, I know. High, low, or any of them.
You might as well do the one inch and, I mean, one point... You might as well do the one inch and, I mean, one point plus.
We'll have to landowners decide that and we go accordingly. But I think if we invite the landowners to come in and there's a big storm, we only want the half inch.
Then you gotta go with the half inch.
But that, is that applicable to following all this procedure, to have them visit before you let?
Yes, yes.
Which direction?
If, there's no voting or anything per se as far as a legal procedure, but the input is great when you're looking at half inch and one inch.
Well, get that published then so that they know that it's next week.
As, what do you want?
I'll back my motion up.
To nine thirty?
Well, I would think the.
Nine thirty. Give enough time.
Nine thirty?
Nine, nine fifteen or?
Cause the other one we've kind of determined isn't gonna take very long.
No, the other one won't take long.
It'll be quick.
Should we say nine fifteen?
I'd say nine fifteen and that way we get time to talk about.
If we have to talk a little longer, we can always be a little later.
Yeah. So you're gonna publish it, is what you're gonna do and put it, I mean, you're gonna put it in paper?
Hopefully we'll get it in the paper.
I would hope so.
I'll talk to you after, too.
Yeah.
With some, I got cookies. I'm gonna quit getting it in. There you go.
Well, the other thing, and you're, the, they're two separate, correct?
Yes, they are.
I wonder how that's gonna all shake out, you got your work kind of, where you can sort through all this, Rick, but.
Well, yeah, we'll get it.
It appears, though, that we have the one low bidder, is the low bidder all the way across.
Oh, are they? Which one is it?
No.
Oh, good.
Yeah, so.
So are you making a?
Makes it simpler for us.
Oh, yeah, and if somebody close?
And who's close?
I know him.
They really wanted this job, I, they told me that several times. When's it coming up, when's it coming up, we want that job, it's out the front door.
Yeah, so you're making a decision on both Minetow and Branch B, they're not independent projects.
They are independent.
They're not combined.
No, they're not combined, that's what I was trying to say.
There you go, right.
Okay.
Same area.
They're independent of each other, but they're, okay, you're making a decision.
They're big enough separately that you bend them separately.
Right, correct, well put.
Dollar amount.
We're just trying to.
You have any concern that if it, if it happens to be the same contractor for both?
Not a problem with these guys.
No, they're capable.
Very efficient, capable, yeah. Second or third generation here and, yeah.
So would they be able to do both within the timeframe that we're looking?
Yes, I really think so. They're pretty efficient.
Okay.
Yeah. Which is legitimately a question, absolutely.
What's the timeline you're looking at?
December, what did we say?
End of the year, basically, isn't it?
I think so. It was in December, I don't remember.
No, we're not going real deep. So there'll be a light, a lot of tile piping a day. Cause we're not going real deep. Of course, it all depends on your weather this summer, too.
Yeah, we, yeah.
If you get a wet year, it just slows it down and.
Yeah. So the biggest discussion slash concern is probably the differential between the one inch and the two inch. Just to make sure we don't overstep.
Yes, yes.
And we make sure that's, we're publishing that, where there'll be ample time for any needed discussion.
We have December first as the completion time.
I saw that on that.
What was the, what's the length of the? I mean, you're looking at.
How many, how many feet or miles?
It was major, was it?
It's about, the one is probably two miles long.
Two miles, that's, that's.
Yes, yeah.
Well, that's why I was wondering, I mean, you got the highest, one point five, wasn't there?
Yeah. Yeah, the high was pretty high.
Yeah, and they, yeah.
And all that's, still making a difference.
No, I kind of, I don't wanna try to read your mind, cause I don't wanna know what all is in, in there. But anyway, it does seem that just how you just slice it, there's huge differences in the bids.
You get that, Phil.
You do on this size of job.
You don't want that one low bid to be like forty percent lower than everybody else. Cause then that scares the crap out of you.
Right.
Absolutely.
You don't, you throw up, usually the high ones, you throw them out, out of the consideration because.
They just put it into the tape, if it's.
If we get it, great.
It's great, that they're not, they're hungry for the project.
That's right, but if we get it, we'll do it on it.
Sure.
If you look at that one compared to the second low, we're not that far off. So I'm comfortable with it.
Yeah, well, I'm, my point from wherever is always gonna be that the contractor is quality.
Yeah, and these guys are good.
We don't.
And a lot of these farmers in the area hire this group to do their tiling, so they're comfortable with them.
Yeah, that's about a line, you know, on the low side of it.
Right, the area, too. I mean, it's right on.
And obviously, that makes the difference when you're talking, you know, some from way further away on some of these different projects.
Well, it makes a big difference.
Or that just, just distance.
Yeah. Some of these would have to rent hotel here for their crew, they come down to stay the week. Work long hours and, yeah, whereas this is out their back door.
Well, really, we're setting pretty good, we just wanna have that open discussion.
Yeah.
On the, on the coefficient.
Yeah, the main is about a, little less than two miles. Eleven thousand feet and Branch B is about seventy-five hundred feet.
But this is all bid on concrete?
Yes, yep. There's enough depth, we had some concern on the plastic. Concrete's pretty forgiving, yeah.
Is there, you know, just, just throwing up that concrete, plastic thing, as you looked at, at this, and you did a very thorough job, as usual. Any application for plastic in this?
Maybe on some of the end of the lines, but by the time you mix that up and the, and you fill with.
Well, right, I understand, you mishmash, it's, it's been more complicated.
Yeah, yeah.
But depth is the biggest concern?
Yes.
Lot of depth on these projects?
Just enough, it's not deep for these contractors, but it's deep enough where we'd be concerned about the strength.
You start to get, what, just roughly depth wise on some of this stuff?
Not unusual to be twelve to fourteen feet deep.
Right. So. I don't profess to be, nor do I ever intend to be, a tiling expert, but I have researched the, the plastic versus the concrete. And, yeah, you start getting depth, you start getting rock, you start getting other concerns.
It's about the same.
And then all of a sudden, yeah, so.
Yeah.
So you're.
But you do, you do take that into consideration?
When we looked at it, we definitely.
When you're really into the projects, I'm not arguing really just on.
No, 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 no.
I'm not, I didn't want it all.
We, we look at it.
Cause you've been here and you've heard the concerns of the, of the landowners.
We had a couple of successful plastic jobs in Palo Alto County last year.
And, you know, I'm not really arguing this one because it is probably depth.
It's just deep enough, yeah.
It does lend itself to the concrete.
That's right. Well, and, and, yeah, it's, with a hundred or a hundred and twenty year product, it's, yeah. That's what you're looking at.
Remember, we go back to Bruce's concern on another project, are, are we reassured of the quality, integrity of the concrete pipe?
Yes, we, we checked the production date, yes.
So, I mean, there's a lot of factors.
They have to be DOT requirements for the strength of the pipe, so it all has wire in it, reinforcing. Yeah.
But all these things are exactly what, I think we're all in agreement, they're, we'll be dead before anybody ever addresses this again.
Oh, yeah.
Well, we, we wanna be, and I hope we all live to be a hundred and some years old, but.
And still.
You know, don't, you know, we, we always wanna look at the options as we're gonna look on the differential of coefficient in this project. And not just say, yep, this is it.
This is good for today, we don't worry about.
We're throwing it to the ground, but it's great cause it's concrete and, yeah. I think we got it covered on this one pretty well.
I really think so, yeah.
Okay, uh, let's see, we vote.
We didn't vote.
We did not vote on the nine fifteen.
We have a first and a second.
Yeah, we have a first and a second, correct?
Yep.
Okay, all in favor of the nine fifteen?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Now we have excepted, appraisers report that's at hearing date.
Appraisers, is that the?
Eleven sub five.
Oh, I see, that should have been down below.
It was down one, or it's up one.
Anexation?
Well. I think it's got typed on, I think it's got typed on the wrong line.
Which one are you looking at?
Oh.
Under D D six. So what is that?
I think this is mess.
Oh, yeah. Did we, did I get you the appraisers report for six? Can't remember, I'll have to check. Yeah.
Charles.
And I, I'll grab my sub five, eleven stuff, too.
Well, I'm gonna run downstairs.
Yeah, we're gonna take a short recess, we're gonna hang up.
Is this empty?
Okay.
We go home, you gotta stand up.